Fudge, french fries, Olympics. Oh, nice.
Okay, got you. So now that's getting free. And they're gonna start with the chassis and build a jet, build it on top of the chassis. Is chassis made out of aluminum or is it made out of heavy gauge steel?
Oh, great. Perfect. All right.
All right, seven o'clock, so I will call to order the discussion township board supervisors meeting for Tuesday of August 3rd, 2021. We'll start by our usual pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, in due regard, like our own stance, our own nation, our own God, and his whole liberty and justice for all.
Shy one on leaders in a moment of silence.
Here we go. And if you remain standing, we'll just take a moment to think of our first responders and our healthcare workers who have taken care of a lot of increases in their numbers again. Thank you.
I announced that the board meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. And chairman's report, I want to remind everybody that the Goshen Fair is back and underway from yesterday through August 7th. Encourage everyone to go down and visit the fair and support those who operate that fair.
That's the money.
Great cost. The other thing that I want to announce is the board met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss a legal matter related to the Paley Pike Trail and a personnel matter. Also announced that Leo Sinclair has resigned from the Conservancy Board. He's moved from the township. So if anyone out there is interested in building a position on ABC, we're taking applications. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no emergency service reports this evening, no financial report. Next is to approve the minutes and treasurer report. So the first is the minutes from our July 20th meeting. We want to move to the...
Mr. Chair, before you make a motion, I'd like to point out that there are a couple corrections to the minutes.
Okay.
This board meeting was my first meeting dictating the minutes. I had misspelled Christie Marshall's name, so I apologize for that. I corrected that spelling. I also added in attendance Christie Marshall, Eric Meyer, Tom Kilburn, Christina Morley, and Brian Hutchinson as being present at that meeting.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as they are amended by Chris.
July 20.
July 20, 2021.
Okay. Any other board discussions? Any public comment? Christina.
Thank you. Christina Morley, 1530 Allison Drilling. These are just a couple housekeeping things. On page one, line 37, there is a grammatical typo. I think there's some words that are just switched around. It says, "A section of the township code to create new a definition." I think it should say, "A new definition," to create a new definition. Just switching those two words around. And then, as I was reading this, on page two, line one begins a description of what my public comment was. And it states that my comment was to separate the time and effort that goes into preparing these documents from the document itself. As you'll recall, I actually made a quite lengthy doc comment, and I understand that this is not a transcript of that comment. But I don't think that the statement actually captures the sentiment of what, or the real meaning of what my comment was. This was more or less my opening statement. And what the purpose of my comment was, was to state that there were three significant actions from state entities that should be considered before the board took their vote. Those entities were Judge Barnes, the PUC proposed rules, and the new draft hazard mitigation plan from the county, which had a significant impact on the proposed ordinance, which basically rendered it obsolete before the board even voted on it.
What statement would you like to see in the minutes, Christina?
Precisely that, what I just said.
Yeah, okay, good, all right.
So, thank you. And then there's just one more. And then... It's a line. If I can find it in here, I'll let you know. It's a minor one. It was just a, it was a tense grammar.
Okay. So, Michelle, will you accept that as a friendly amendment to the minutes and then add that to the motion? Christine Morley amendment.
Yes, I would like to offer that as a friendly amendment and take Christine Morley's comments and expand on those in the revised minutes.
I'll second that.
Further comments? Call the question holders in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries for nothing. The treasurer's report. Those four, Steve, do you have any comments to make?
Not in particular, just would call out that the new ARCA fund has its first deposit and is set up and ready to go.
Good. One, one real minor correction, Dave. I think on the first page, the page after the cover, the July 15th, the July 29th statement of the funds there, the new fund that was opened up, I think you want to put under receipts the 949 rather than interest earned. It'd be great to have that much interest earned, but I think you want it under receipts, right?
Yes, you're correct.
A very minor, but I figured, I'm sure you got the books correctly, but I...
We'll make this.
I love to have that much interest. People must have that opinion today.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and summarized in the treasurer's report.
Second a motion.
John, are there any further comments with regard to the bills or statements? Any public comment? You're gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries for nothing. You, our whole business. We have a presentation tonight. I was, I sat in at the last Westchester cog meeting and heard a presentation on the energy purchase power agreement. And each of the partner municipalities will hear a presentation from our group. And Will is here tonight to present that to us.
I'm okay presenting here. I don't need a microphone.
On YouTube, yeah.
Unless it's more convenient for you to be there, Will, and there's not a lot of people here, but I'm not sure that we can get a microphone to you.
Maybe, maybe more visible at the podium if you can see your...
Yeah, I can't advance on that.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I can sit over there. Do that, Will. That'll work.
That way you'll show up better.
And Will, introduce yourself when you get up there.
Sure. My name is Will Williams. I'm the sustainability director for Westchester Borough. Here, not in a professional capacity, but as a member of the advisory group for this energy project, which has been going on since 2019. If you'll recall, the participating municipalities, including Goshen, West Goshen, West Wayland, West Chesterborough, East Bradford, and West Town, all came together in 2019, funded a energy transition plan. We received that about three or four weeks before lockdown last year. And, you know, tough time to get some new things going. But I'm proud to say the advisory group has continued to need, continue to work on new things, and I'm here to talk about one of those new things today. Go ahead and just get to the next slide. As, as you mentioned, we're doing this presentation to each of the municipalities. This is the fourth out of six that I'm due to give before the end of August. And the, this is really about energy procurement. Our study said that while some of the municipalities have community-wide energy goals, local government really doesn't have a lot of impact on the way that energy is used and procured in the community. But one of the most impactful things that we can all do is get our own house in order and tell our story. And I hear you loud and clear about being, being able to do that in a fiscally responsible way. I was looking up at the, this township, like a seal or logo up here. That, that is exactly how I learned about sustainability 10, 15 years ago. If something's going to be truly sustainable, it has to be good environmentally, good financially, and there's an equity component to just about everything. So I just want to jump right in here and remind everyone how all of the municipalities buy energy currently. We're all Constellation Energy customers. They're our third-party energy supplier. But it's not a coincidence that we all are Constellation customers. They are the Coca-Cola of energy procurement. Right now, you are signing on to two or three-year energy supply contracts. Most of us go through a different procurement group or cohort or something, some sort of group buying mechanism to, you know, get more volume, get the price down. That is an on-bill transaction. There's no separate transaction. It's right on the PICO bill. We get a fixed price for those two or three years that we sign on. What we don't know is where energy's coming from or what sources. But we do know it's, you know, a mix of the grid, which is actually in this area, nuclear-dependent and natural gas. But we really don't know. It's kind of all mixed in there. So go ahead to the next slide there. And when we're buying energy, right, we have our PICO bill, and then energy supply is a line item on that PICO bill. And we don't get this level of detail on the PICO bill, but if you look at your energy supply contract, you're actually buying a lot more than energy. The energy cost is just one component. There's about a dozen other things that are lumped into that supply price. So again, even though we're thinking of energy supply, there's a lot of things that are in there. I've been doing energy procurement for over 10 years professionally. And, you know, truth be told, there's a lot of things in there that, that I can't explain, and that people who are on the other side, they can't explain either. A lot of them are driven by regulations, laws, things that don't really follow normal markets. And, you know, we can't, there's no strategy around them. You just sign up for them. So a power purchase agreement is very similar. It's basically an underlying long-term commitment for the energy component of that energy supply contract. With a power purchase agreement, you still get all those things. You still get energy supply. Go ahead to the next slide. But we still have two or three-year supply contracts. We sell the fixed price, still on bill. It's, it really is truly replacing that energy supply item on a bill. But the differences are, we know it's clean energy resource. We know the location of that source, and it's a new project. If we want to buy clean energy for the first time, that should create new clean energy projects on the grid. There are a lot of different ways to buy energy and clean energy. This is really the only one that directly results in a new project. We did a RFI last year, and someone proposed building us a project with, like, whatever logo we wanted on the panel so that you could see it from space. But not, not pursuing that, but, you know, we are, what we're talking about is signing up for energy from a distinct project.
Will, let me interrupt you for one second on that. You don't have to go back to the slide, but under the reference to the term, excuse me. Will, let me, let me just ask one question relative to that prior slide. Under the, one that you had listed there is the term in the agreement is two to three years. When I read through the Constellation, this master retail, it doesn't look like it, it just looks like it's an ongoing term with, with 60, whatever it is, days to give notice. So did I miss something, or is it a different agreement?
No, it's a great question. It's going right into my next slide here. So a power purchase agreement, could you go back two slides? Right. So the power purchase agreement, again, is for the energy component of your energy supply. The power purchase agreement is a 15-year agreement. What is, what remains two or three years is the energy supply contract, right? So the power purchase agreement feeds into your energy supply agreement. Constellation sets the prices for all those other little things, which, by the way, all those other line items add up to 50% of the bill. But those things need to change every two or three years. There are no 15-year energy supply contracts. So the, the power purchase agreement is a longer-term agreement, which locks in the component, the energy component of the supply contract. So really, it's five successive three-year supply contracts with a 15-year power purchase agreement underneath.
Okay, so we're really two agreements.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks, thanks.
So with that in mind, I mentioned I'm going around to all the municipalities and giving this same presentation. And the action item for the elected officials to consider is to authorize the township manager to execute a 15-year power purchase agreement and an initial three-year energy supply contract, starting in 2024, in conjunction with the rest of us, with the supply cost equal to or less than X per megawatt hour, which, if, if you want to keep listening, we can get into picking a price, but I want to stop here and first cover the process. So why the manager, a typical supply contract probably comes in front of you all and, you know, deliberated in a public meeting. This is a little different. If, if and when we all agree to move forward, we provide a letter of commitment to Constellation. And that letter says that, you know, there, we understand what we're doing and that we understand the logistics of getting this done, and the logistics are a little tricky. They're basically playing a matchmaker between the developer and the municipalities working together. When they find a match, you have 24 hours to sign on the dotted line. So the approach we're taking is because the price is the only blank in that contract at this point, we're asking the elected officials to set a maximum price that they're comfortable with, and then we will search out a project that is equal to or less than that in price. And if we find one, then the managers can hopefully, I don't even know how we're going to do it with five individuals or six individuals. Five, six managers will sign that agreement within essentially a single business that year. So that's the process, and I just want to pause there and see if there are questions.
I have a question, Will. The 15-year PPA, is that a legitimate contract?
They very carefully do not use the C word. It's an agreement throughout.
Well, if you agree and I agree, and you're giving me some and I'm giving you some, that's contract.
Yep. I disagree.
Is, is it possible to get out of that 15-year contract?
You wouldn't want to. The terms are similar to the current energy supply contracts that you're signing. If you exit the contract, then they have all this energy that they're not selling. They have to go out and resell that. They're not going to try that hard. They're going to have to sell it for cheaper than what you agreed to pay for it initially. And the contract says you have to pay this. Yeah. So if you're to exit that...
And you're locked in for 15 years?
Yes.
Will, the, that blank number, which is the key to, well, in this case, megawatt. But we need to know, of course, what our rates are here. You probably have them already from somebody other...
These are the rates for all the municipalities. You guys are $47, $48 an megawatt hour currently. Last year and the previous three years, you were paying 54. Before that, you were in the upper 60s.
We're, we're relative to the, the trend line these last four years, and going forward, we're looking pretty good.
Yep.
Do we, do, can you share with us any of the other municipalities? Have they given some bottom lines as to where they want to see the number?
Yep. So thus far, everyone's agreed to $51 a megawatt hour. That is, if you go to the next slide there. So to put that in perspective, a megawatt hour is just 1,000 kilowatt hours, so you can buy about 1,000 and get cents per kilowatt hour.
Cent per kilo. So 5.1, no, excuse me, you have 5.1.
5.1 cents per kilowatt hour. And you use about 2,000 megawatt hours a year. So versus today, a $51 per megawatt hour price is a 6% premium. That is $5,850 additional cost for East Goshen. However, if you go back a slide, last year you were paying $54 a megawatt hour. Four years ago, you were paying $67 a megawatt hour. And if you see West Chesterborough, we're currently paying $43. We're over 10% lower than you all. But if you'll see, our price is heading up next year, not next year, but in 2023, and yours will too. The, the market's bottomed out in, when we were signing up for our 2021 and 2022 contract, the market bottomed out in 2019 as evidenced by the fact that it didn't get lower last year. Everyone at home, all those empty...
Oh, it still didn't get lower?
Yeah, all those empty office buildings, venues, everything. The price did not get lower than it did in 2019. As it is, the gas companies are unable to recover the costs that they invested in the state fracking 10, 15 years ago, and they're going out of business, and they need to...
Recruit those.
Yep.
So that, that's always going to ask whether the gas component of the energy is driving, that's, that's going to be driving the market then in these, these years ahead.
Yeah, and like I said, right, and presumably that's supply, supply-demand driven, right? Last year, the supply way down, price flat. It can't get any lower. The, what we're paying right now, $43 a megawatt hour, I, like I said, I've been doing this professionally 10 years. I've never seen a price that low. It was, it was jaw-dropping when I saw that. So we think...
Why are you paying such a low price?
We're good. Okay. We have, we have a lot more volume. We have two large wastewater treatment plants. That's one.
What hap, when, when you have a three-year contract, you set the rate at $43. And if they can supply it, they supply it at $43 a W. What, what happens if they, if their cost goes up?
Then they lose money on the deal.
Okay.
That's why the prices are going up.
And what happens if we see that another source is cheaper and we want to go to $40 a megawatt? Do we have to sign another three-year contract, and will they sign it for a lower rate?
No.
What happens with the 15-year contract if we don't sign a contract that they want? A 15-year PPA?
Yeah. You're, I mean, you're obligated to continue with a three-year supply agreements. You can technically get out of that, and you can take...
Technically is a very, very difficult one.
It, it's very complex, but it can be done. You could go to one of Constellation's competitor and take the power purchase agreement with you and supply, and, and sign a new three-year supply contract with another energy supplier. But it's, it's very complex and probably expensive.
And every... And every member municipality would have to go. You just can't do one.
Not necessarily, yeah, which is a good question and, and one I've been answering everywhere I go. So, you know, I mentioned we are pretty large scale in terms of municipality, and that scale brings us value. All of us working together brings us value. This project can proceed without everyone on board, but it will result in a higher price for everyone and less likelihood that we're able to find a project which, you know, meets our price ceiling. That being said, we have seen prices, $42, and remember, I said $43 was jaw-dropping. Constellation has shown us 42. They've shown us 46. They've shown us 48. Again, we're asking, because we won't be able to publicly deliberate that contract with the number filled in and the project location, instead, we're asking the elected folks to set a maximum price that they're comfortable with and trying to find a project that...
Let me, let me back back a little bit. So we're currently at 47 per megawatt?
Yeah, it might be 48, but yeah.
And you had some or a number that has said 51 we're comfortable with. If East Goshen were to say, well, we're comfortable with 47 or 48, what does that do? Does that upset the apple cart for everybody else, and then you've got to go back and discuss it with them, say, oh, East Goshen's committed 48?
Yeah.
It's almost kind of like this auction.
Yeah. I, I think what's more likely to happen is they come back to us and they say, we got a project at 48, and we'll have to go back to them. We're not going to tell them what a price is.
Okay.
Because we want them to compete as hard as they can in the business. Let's say you said 47, and they come back with a project.
What if they're listening tonight?
At 48. I don't think they're perusing the minutes, though.
I don't know.
Everybody's in.
We, we would have to go back to them and say, we have, I think, East Goshen accounts for about 10, 11% of our total energy use of the six municipalities. We'll have to go back and say, can we still get this price if only, we're only buying 90% of what we originally committed to? And at that point, they'll probably say, you know, yes or no, hopefully in 24 hours, and that, that kind of remains to be seen.
Okay. And you're looking for an answer tonight, Will?
No.
No?
Not necessarily, no. I think it's a good idea while I'm here for you to pick up price to deliberate in the future in case I can help. And again, I mentioned, everyone so far has agreed to 51. That was a pretty easy sell to West Goshen because it's pretty significant savings to them. Small premium for three of us, even with two other municipalities. But again, price versus today is, is not the whole picture. You are going to pay more than you're paying right now. So West Chesterborough agreed to 51. They, they agreed to what they were paying last year.
Well, this is based on 2024 too, though, correct?
Yep. And the, the lead time is two reasons. One, some of us have contracts that go through 2023. But the other thing, keep in mind, this is a new project. And the power purchase agreement is, is basically the collateral that they need to go get the finance and get a project built. So these projects are up two, three, four years. Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question, please? So, Will, where did the 6% premium number come from?
Was it the next slide? Yeah, that was. So currently paying forty-eight dollars a megawatt hour. So check my math here, but three extra dollars would, versus forty-eight, would be a six percent premium?
So from today until twenty twenty-four, when it starts?
No, from twenty twenty-four through, well, this is for the initial three-year supply price. That would be a six percent premium versus today.
If our rates stay the same.
Not necessarily based on the market rating point of.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a guessing game, but then, you know, you following the trends and seeing, Will, I mean, you're providing a bit of knowledgeable information.
Yeah, I think that historical context is really important. You know, it's easy to say it's a couple more bucks than today, but these are unprecedented and there's only one way for them to go. I'm not saying they're going to spike, but you know. And I've also been trying not to use the hedge word because I think that's something government is not comfortable with. But, you know, if you could lock in your health insurance costs at today's rate, or fifteen years from now, would you do that? Yeah. So go ahead to the next slide. I think this is the last one. So what we've already done, we've had a review by the solicitor for the cog, who is Kristen Camp.
Yes.
I believe she is soliciting here. She's our solicitor at Borough as well, so that's done. She had some very minor questions, more about sort of the energy concepts, not so much the legal concepts. Second bullet, educate and obtain approvals for contract terms, meaning price. That's in process right now. Once we have the price, that, you know, the lowest price that everyone agrees to, we can pencil that in. And we have an energy consultant lined up to do a final review of that contract. I mentioned that the true next step, going back to Constellation, would be to provide a letter of commitment. Again, that says we know what we're talking about and we understand and agree to the legitimate sub-signing power purchase agreement. And then, that's the fun part. Like I said, they play matchmaker and hopefully they can find something for us. And what I told every group is if that doesn't get done by the end of this year, and this year is the fastest year in history. We'll come back first quarter next year. I don't know about your board, but we will have three new faces on Borough Council. So we'll go back to the new boards and make sure that they are all comfortable with the price set and hopefully continue shopping. But you're not looking, you're not looking for.
A number from us tonight, though, Will? Just for us to share, to room and consider what we.
Yeah, only one municipality has done that. You know, made a motion and agreed. But I would like it by mid-February. We want to give an update to the, sorry, mid-February, in September.
Okay, still, that's some time that. You know, if I, I've got the number, a number in my head that's lower than fifty-one. But, and appreciating everything you shared, I'm wondering if there's someone, another entity we can bounce this off of. And that's not to discount you at all, but again, due diligence, that we feel comfortable with the number. And I don't know what that resource is. I know in East Bradford Township, we used a third party for our electricity called Epix. Know Epix?
Yeah.
And they did very well by us. I, you know, I, Mandy, you know, Mandy. And I know we must still have those agreements at East Bradford Township. They're a broker. And I'd be, you know, I'd be curious to bounce it off of. Maybe you could touch base with Mandy and ask her to contact, I can't remember the fellow's name, but Epix.
Yeah, I mean, there's tons of brokers on that.
But they, they're a pretty good, he's a pretty good operator and have done well. They did well by East Bradford. And just try and get a sense of, you know, this is what we're looking at, this was a number. Maybe already, he may be, again, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he's pretty sharp. And so just trying to get, since we have a little time.
Yeah.
To try and find some ballast there to feel comfortable with.
I was thinking that Dave might be able to model some things for us too at different rates. What's the actual qualified number based on our usage at different rates? Would you look at that and see, you know, is it three hundred dollars or three thousand dollars or whatever?
Yeah, if I could just, about working with a broker, I'll just say one thing. Brokers are great, worked with them my whole life. Brokers stand to lose business if you go this way. And by the way, you're paying a broker a lot of money.
Yeah, there is no doubt there was a fee involved with.
Right.
The counter against the cost that they were bringing you down to.
So they make a couple tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. And if you multiply that by your kilowatt hours and multiply that by three years, it's a very lucrative business.
Yes, it is.
And they stand to, it doesn't sound like you're currently using them. But I guess what I'm saying is, don't go to your current broker and say, hey, we're thinking about taking our business elsewhere. What do you think of this price? Because you're going to get, you know. Yeah. The other thing is, again, keep in mind that we plan on doing what you just said. But we want to do it on behalf of all the municipalities when we get a price. The energy consultant that we're hoping to get their assistance with, already talked to them about it. They seem like they're on board, but they are the best in business. They do just this type thing for Big Tech, Google, Facebook. They did it for City of Philadelphia. Philadelphia got forty-three dollars a megawatt hour. This guy is best in the business. He's a local dude and we're hoping to get him to spend a day reviewing our contract when we're able to pencil in the price.
So even if we, if we said fifty-one, it doesn't mean that's what it's going to be. It could be forty-three, it could be forty-six, it could be where we are right now, forty-seven, going forward.
We saw as low as forty-two. They were showing us comparable projects. And, you know, forty-two, forty-five, forty-six, all over the map. I would say the average is high forties, but that was also three, four, five months ago. This is, this is supply-demand.
That's what I was just going to ask you, relative to whether we're going to be wearing masks again in September, whether this environment is going to continue? And the relative change, the supply-demand change are going to continue to be affected? Which for purchase, building new infrastructure.
Yeah. Yeah, what I would definitely recommend you do is, like I said, we all buy energy a little different ways. Go through different group buying groups. Find your group, go back to them, ask for a contract price for twenty twenty-four. And that gives you, that gives you another price to triangulate. That's what I did, which shows our price increasing about ten percent. About twelve percent if we were to sign out your agreements today. So again, that's why we agreed to pay a small premium.
That's right, because if you guys were at forty-three and you agreed to this, that clearly, just you say, triangulate with that. So that's something, Dave, I know you just wrote it down. Okay.
Thanks, Will. I appreciate it.
Will, thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks.
Okay, so we.
This will carry forward on our agenda.
Yeah, we have carried forward and we have a couple things that Dave and Derek will put together for us for further consideration. Next agenda item under whole business is that we have gotten the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds. We got half this year and half next year. We have received nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we have certain things we can do with those funds and certain things we can't do with those funds. So I'm going to just turn it over to Derek, because staff has prepared some comments and ideas about the use.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, the funds came in for the first half of the coronavirus relief funds and a total nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents. More so than the last time I brought this subject up, I sort of defined a little bit more specifics. I was just, you know, when we discussed this at the last time in the meeting, I just basically wanted to give you an FYI if it's coming and think about what we can do with it. Now, based on the parameters of what we are allowed to do with it, some of the individual feedback I've gotten from board members, some comments from the board members at that public meeting. Two issues that I put up in the memo are, one, first and foremost, the sewer infrastructure projects. There is no shortage of them in East Ocean. We have a couple of large ones right now that unfortunately, this would be a sort of a drop in the bucket for what we are on the hook for, for a couple of those projects. Namely, the West Townway pump station, which we share responsibility with, with West Ocean Township. As well as collection system issues within the Hershey's Mill estate neighborhood. So those are the two broadly. And then we can get into if there's other sewer infrastructure projects that they would be useful for. But sewer infrastructure is numero uno, if you will, of when this came out. Infrastructure projects in general were named first and foremost. So that leads me to my next point, which is also an infrastructure issue, which is also part of the coronavirus relief language, which was broadband infrastructure. A lot of people are talking about hybrid meeting setups. Everybody wants to participate from home now, not everybody, but many people. So we are having, I don't know if anybody noticed the last meeting, but we're having some mic issues here, some technology issues. So regardless, this meeting room definitely needs to be updated from a microphone standpoint. Now, I think it behooves us to look even further into the future and put some money aside and work with some vendors to get some pricing on, not only replacing the mics, but doing a little bit more innovative things with this room, in particular, hybrid meeting setups where people could participate, no matter if they're here or if they are at home. Fully participate, not just watch on YouTube. Same thing if a board member cannot make it, that we can have full participation. So it's just sort of looking down the road at, I think, post-COVID of what's going to continue on even after the pandemic is over. So Dave and I got together, started talking this out. And this is also, I will say, this is probably very straightforward from an auditing standpoint, when you look at that as well. So those are just some of our thoughts. I outlined it in this memo. Appreciate the board's feedback. Timeline wise, we would like to pass a budget amendment for twenty twenty-one for this half of the money. Sometime in the next meeting or two, if we can get a consensus on this. And then we will handle the second half through the twenty twenty-two budget process. Thank you.
Just a quick back of the envelope, we're going to get a total of about one point nine million in two tranches. And back to the envelopes, just the projects we're talking about, ones who were close to two million dollars. So what we're getting on the COVID relief doesn't cover the full cost of some of the infrastructure issues that we're going to be facing this year, next year, and the year after that. So I think that dedicating the majority of the sewer infrastructure project, the funders too, is infrastructure projects makes a lot of sense.
Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak freely.
How much is the new customer?
At a forty thousand?
Three basis points is the interest on the account. It means that the faster we spend it, the better we are, as long as we have legitimate things to spend on it. Because otherwise, we're losing money as inflation goes on. So this ought to be a priority.
Yeah, and so I think that I'm actually, just make a statement that I support the staff suggestion on sewer infrastructure projects. The meeting room update, I think is, I think it's important. We need to move our microphones and our screens and things into the twenty-first century.
Let's do it. Have we heard anything back from West Ocean on the municipal?
We had a, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, just update on that. And we had a back and forth between our municipal authority, their municipal authority, staff, board members. And we're closing in on an agreement on the, what needs to be done, the scope of the project, who we pay for what. There were issues around storm banks and their property versus our property and who's responsible for what. So we had a really good, robust discussion. I think we're getting to a point where we're closing in on a reasonable number.
Yeah, and I want to add to that, it was, we were, as the municipal authority and as the board was represented, Dave and I attended that. Derek was there and our municipal authority engineer from Pinoni, Mike Ellis. They, they being West Ocean Municipal Authority and through the Board of Supervisors as well in collaboration. They have, they improved their numbers much more consistently with our fifty-two percent contribution for that pump station and obligation. To where the municipal authority members, who were very vested and quite sharp, were comfortable with the new numbers presented, which reflected going back a number of months, what they felt comfortable with. Because this, the cost of this pump station, as you know, as we've shared, has escalated dramatically. And initially had hiccups because the early estimates for which we had based bond money were just too soft. And then it escalated with some real numbers. Then there was a recent, in the last number of months, further escalation well beyond that, that really got our attention. And that's when we had this convening. And in anticipation of that, West Ocean really did their numbers and the municipal authority felt very comfortable with them. So that this stimulus money and referencing the relationship to lots of strings attached with federal money, audits, et cetera. Infrastructure, particularly water and sewer, are high on the list and very clean, as well as broadband, which is a broad term in reference to the other improvements, infrastructure, if you will, for our communication. So targeting it all, I think, or nearly all of it, possibly this year is referenced here and quite possibly next year for those two projects, translates to a couple of things for eighty-five percent of our residents are on public sewer. And with the cost of these two projects, this boost will probably stave off other rate increases. So it's really welcome money, it's clean to go after the sewer, they're both needy, and so I support it as well. I support the breakdown. And Derek's thirty thousand dollar request, he may need a little free board on that. We don't necessarily have to target it against this, but there may be, as the numbers come in, maybe it'll be thirty-five thousand to upgrade it here. But the participation and the community input, the public participation, as well as our ability with board members not being able to attend meetings in person at times, COVID aside, to have that interface, I think it's really valuable in our public service environment. So I think they're both really nice and clean within this COVID stimulus allowance.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm in support of spending the money on these items as well. I think that it's time to get this meeting room updated. And the questions I had though, are we required to spend this money within a certain period of time? Besides the fact that we lose money on it if we don't move on it? And do we have to have a resolution that, do we have to pass a resolution or a budget amendment? What is it? Amend the budget? Resolution would include allocations for various topics. Do we have to have specifics in there or do we just generally have a blinded statement?
Well, I would, I would feel more comfortable with a resolution.
Specific?
Well, it depends what you mean. By the way, sewer infrastructure projects, I don't feel like is very specific. So I think we can keep it broad in that sense.
How about for the dollar figure? Do we have to have the dollar figures specified in the resolution?
I prefer to, yes.
We have, we had a dollar.
That's fine, I just wanted to know.
And to the first question, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to spend it by the end of twenty twenty-four in totality. But it's a little bit of leeway that way because we're allowed to start a project by the end of twenty twenty-four and it could go over.
Some more years.
When is our next budget process meeting?
I think we're next month. Next, I think we're due to have one in September. And that leads me to the other, yes, we do have to pass a resolution for the amendment for twenty twenty-one because this was not obviously included in the twenty twenty-one discussion back last year. But the plan. But the plan, and in talking with my colleagues around the county, is for the second half of the money to be included in the regular 2022 budget process. In other words, we won't have to pass an amendment next year because we're handling that through the normal process of the budget.
John, I have down here September 14th is our first budget work session.
That is the schedule.
That's a long time to wait. I think we ought to have this motion, I mean, we can get it right away. Let's get it right away.
So if the board's agreeable to what I am suggesting, that I was going to have at the August 17th meeting, the actual amendment to the budget.
It will be broad enough to include both of these sewer projects.
Right. It'll be dollar receipt against.
Dollar figures.
It'll be received against expense.
Yeah, and attached to quote-unquote sewer infrastructure projects is outlined here.
And you can round off the 77 cents.
Yeah, we can do that. Go by a code.
All right, well, that sounds like a good question. We don't want to do anything this evening.
No, no. Sorry, thanks, I was already directing the meeting. Thank you, Dave.
All right, we're done with old business and under new business. We have to consider a resolution pertaining to traffic signal maintenance agreement, basically a consolidation, and I'll let Derek explain. It's a decrease in bureaucracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is what I would consider a housekeeping item. The TE160 applications are used for, when municipalities have to apply for changing, the physical changing or alteration of traffic signals. So it comes up a lot to warn, you know, developments coming up and, you know, new development comes up, then, you know, a new signal may go in, something of that nature. So we don't do them a lot here, but every time a TE160 application comes up, currently throughout the entire Commonwealth, there needs to be a resolution attached with that TE160 application. The end of last year, PENDOT decided that was too much bureaucracy. It was a little ridiculous, it was a little redundant. So their hope is to, by the end of the year, essentially get everybody on board to say, this is the resolution to end all resolutions. In other words, we pass this one, and then going forward, the TE160 can be signed by the township manager. And going forward, we do not do any more resolutions attached to TE164. Again, we do this TE164s rarely, and they come up at various points. It doesn't, it's not included just for FYI, you know, if something gets hit by lightning for the signal or a car hits a signal, that's different. That's just maintenance repair. These are for brand-new signals or brand-new signal alterations to the physical spot of it's in or something of that nature, different mask using or something of that. So again, this is, the resolution is on the table. I did not include a draft motion there, I apologize, but the resolution would essentially be to adopt Resolution 2021-202, and then you can read the resolution that I have for the headline. So that is essentially what it is. And the agreement is, the agreement is attached, which is a standard traffic signal maintenance agreement, as well as a, I think I have a press release in here from when it happened in December as part of the changes, as well as the TE160 application, just so you can see it.
There's one question, Derek, you may, or you may know the answer right off the bat. The only thing I wrote down here, and I appreciate what PENDOT's trying to do, and that's commendable on their part. And there's no such thing as pure altruism, so they're doing it for a reason themselves, I'm sure, not just for us. But the question is, are there any new obligations to the municipality contained in the traffic signal maintenance agreement? That's as stated, nothing new has been added to that as part of this.
Yeah, stay the same. We are obligated to do everything in there. That has stayed the same. And there's no, as I said in the memo, there's no sort of financial issues.
I just want to move to that Resolution 2021-202, authorizing the East Ocean Township manager and directing him to submit detached traffic signal maintenance agreement, to submit future modifications to attach to the attached traffic signal maintenance agreement.
Second.
All right. Any other discussions? Any members of the public questions? All the question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries for nothing, thank you. Last piece of new business is two stormwater operation and maintenance agreements.
Can we talk about modified rooms?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board authorize the chair to accept the recommendations of staff to sign the stormwater management operation and maintenance agreements for 843, confirm with Dr.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? Public comment? All the question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries for nothing, thank you. All right, any other matter? I have nothing.
I have nothing.
All right, no other matter?
I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask you if you wanted to give a brief update on your visit to Houston.
That's the only thing I was going to do, is just give a quick update on the visit to SET.
SET.
It's no energy transfers. Down into Houston. Went and visited the facilities, soul control rooms, had a question-to-answer session with a couple of executives, one executive, one manager, and Joe Masero, our local PR guy. They answered all my questions, putting a summary together for the board. They did agree. The win that I see from this is that they have agreed to do an emergency plan with the township and an evacuation plan. So I take that as a win, and we should be hearing from Joe this week. Derek should be hearing from Joe this week to start that process.
That's interesting, and I'm anxious to see the summary. And of course, engage our task force in starting work on that.
It is a win. Michelle has made a suggestion. I'd like to air it here, not for a decision, but just for discussion. She suggested that the pipeline task force should be renamed. What did you suggest there?
Well, to focus on the safety component, emergency preparedness. I think that we need to have, I think we need a task force that's going to be working with the county and with the township on an emergency plan. We've got to focus our efforts on that. So not eminently, but something that we can think about moving forward.
Would it have the name Pipeline in it, or would it be a broader safety planning, emergency? Something, would it happen, the word Pipeline at this point in time, are you thinking?
I don't know, I don't really have an opinion on that.
Well, you know, task force are, as constructed, they really are finite conventions for a body, in this case, a governing body, to establish for a finite period. So then the question I would also bring up then is, is this an entity that we want to establish as a committee? I'm not saying we're deemed necessarily as a commission or a board, which would require an awareness. But do we want to move it from a task force to a committee with that new charter?
That's a consideration that we have. I would have trouble keeping the original personnel of the Pipeline Task Force and just switching them over, and I like, because we have.
Were they so interested all to say?
Of course, of course. But we have the motto. I like the emergency preparation title. We had thought about the motto, and preparing for the future is something that we want to do.
We had a pretty robust discussion when we set up the task force, whether it was going to be a task force or not, and we did agree that, you know, if there was an ongoing role for the task force, that we would change the name from Task Force to something else. Yeah, so we had a discussion about that. And I think the focus is on public safety.
Yes, sir.
So I think that it would be, let's talk some more about that.
Yeah, I don't have a motion or anything.
And you know, I think, David, also, it would be good to, you know, Christina's here as a member of the Pipeline Task Force, so to be able to.
I think one consideration as we discuss is, Christina is here morely as a member of the Pipeline Task Force. Let the task force know, Derek, you can let them know, or David in your liaison role, that this is under consideration. What, you know, what thoughts do they have in it? And engage them in an interactive process for a transition, essentially, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and it's not a huge transition, it's just a slight turn.
It's a little bit of a mission accomplished.
Let's face it, the pipeline is burrowing, and grass is growing on top of it.
Not operating it, but it's, we're in that stage. And then with Michelle's update here, that's moving into a next stage with at least this newest pipeline.
Yeah, evacuation and emergencies, so those are the things we would think about.
And Michelle, I commend you for the extra many, many miles that you traveled, as well as what you went to do with a group that's been difficult to communicate with.
It was a nine-and-a-half-hour layover in Fort Lauderdale. It was, he was brought from his well.
The dogs were good.
If only they were. But no, it was interesting. I apparently am the only township supervisor that's ever taken them up on their offer of a tour.
I will win, that's why it's commendable.
They were, they sat there and just kind of laughed the whole time. They couldn't believe I was there, so.
Good. All right, that's a good discussion, and we'll follow up on that. As I said, Mike suggested as liaison to the Pipeline Task Force, I'll let them know we had this discussion and get some feedback on that. Public comment? Any member?
I don't know if you have any time, Michelle, but our next meeting is on August 12th at 6:30, and so perhaps if you could come. Yeah, it's actually a virtual meeting, but if you could attend, I think that the members of the Pipeline Task Force would really appreciate hearing from you firsthand, you know, feedback of what your trip was like and what you learned from that. And then maybe we could also discuss your suggestion, and that would be a nice, I think that would be a really great meeting to have you there.
I would, I will absolutely come. And prior to the meeting, after I've sent out my summary to the board, I'll send it to you, to somebody, to the Pipeline Task Force.
Okay, so.
So they'll have answers beforehand.
Oh, okay, so you think that will happen? You said there will be time, you'll get it to the board first, and then we'll be able to have it perhaps before the meeting?
Oh, yeah, definitely before the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's over a week ahead. I'm almost done with my summary.
Oh, good, thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Any other public comment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, no liaison reports, no correspondence, so.
Well, don't forget, August 28th is East Ocean Community Day.
That's right.
Starts at 4:00 PM. And it starts at 4:00 PM and fireworks at night.
Second motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries for nothing.
I think you stand record, David.
Certainly did better than I did.
Yeah, I lost the record. We'd still be swinging around in the street. We've got a lot of good philosophy. We're going to have to do it before you find place.
Thanks, everybody, thanks for attending.
Thanks for coming out. Christina, how about meeting on a calendar?